Maybe. Or like start the meeting off with prayer.
I pray by God just one, thank you for everything you do for us. We ask you now because to be with all of the people that have come today to learn more about the county's business. We ask a special blessing on this council, that you give us the wisdom and the knowledge to make good decisions and be pleasing in your side. You know, we ask a special blessing on our seniors and our youth of our county. Use us to do your will and everything, say in the last name.
Pretty much information announcement, accordance with the state of South Carolina Code of Law nineteen seventy six has amended. The Man Star Mullins Enterprise has been notified of date, time, place, and agenda this meeting. Approval of minutes, July twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five, August seventh, two thousand twenty five, special call meeting. So got a motion, got a second, and a discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Goes likewise, I have it. Resolution?
Not aware of anything.
Ordinance?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of council, we still don't have anything further on on item A that's there, so we're just pending more information on that.
Committee report, number one has nothing at this time.
Committee number two has nothing at this time.
Legal update?
I don't have anything in this section either, sir.
Administrative updates?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the council, the council, um, on the update, update. No, update on the capital sales tax. Um, of course, the animal shelter, we do have an update on the animal shelter. I want to keep you all apprised of what's going on at animal shelter. Uh, I know you all have had some questions about that and looking for an overall uh, long-term plan to address our challenges that we we've had for quite some time. They have the animal shelter, which kind of predates uh, some of our camps and those that have been here for a while, uh, are very familiar with the challenges that we've had and continue to have. And so, uh, I've reached out to the Association of Counters, uh, get someone on that staff that, um, uh, has kind of like an expert, if you will, a very knowledgeable of animal shelters and so forth, and that is Mr. Uh, Van Henson with the South Carolina Association of Counters. He will be coming down on Wednesday, uh, August twentieth at nine thirty AM to look at our animal shelter and see what possibilities there are, um, to address the overcrowdedness and all the other things and kind of help us develop a long-term plan to look at what are the options we might um, have in terms, in terms of, uh, expanding uh, our animal shelter. So that will happen on the twentieth. Also, in, uh, looking at the animal shelter and some of the problems we we continue to have when it's flooding, we we continue to have that problem. And so I, uh, have reached out the, uh, South Carolina DOT. I actually had a conversation with the Secretary of Trust, Secretary of Transportation, Justin Powell, uh, because I knew we had put like two hundred million dollars in his budget to address a lot of our brake deficiencies and other things. And, uh, wanted to see was any of that money available to address the cover there, uh, at Highway seventy six. You all have seen this, uh, many times, uh, when we get a flash flood or a heavy rain, it floods there. And but, you know, uh, we spent about eleven million dollars on upgrading our airport and a lot of that was drainage and what have it. We kind of opened up that existing pond nearby the animal shelter, but as you all are aware, it continues to floods. And the reason being is that that copper there at, uh, Highway seventy six is not large enough to handle the volume of water that flows through there. That water comes all the way down from Bluff Road, it's tremendous amount of water. And so, uh, uh, in speaking with the, uh, Secretary of Transportation yesterday, uh, what he proposed, they had already started kind of looking at it, uh, at the request of a delegation. And what he is proposing is that it will take, uh, eight, eight foot by seven foot, um, pot to handle the volume of water, or either six seventy-two inch pots, uh, to take care of that and be able to get that water out. But it comes with a pretty hefty price tag. Uh, you know, it's amazing what construction things, uh, cost this day and time. And so we're talking about a uh, two point one million dollar, uh, cost to, um, uh, correct that. And so what we talked about is that, um, what he proposed, if we could get the Marion County CTC, uh, and that's the Marion County, uh, Transportation Committee, to commit two hundred thousand dollars to do the study and the design of that cover. Uh, they would go ahead and start that process. And then when we return in January, then we would have the conversation with Senate Finance and so forth to see can we get an appropriation uh, in the tune of, uh, two point one million dollars to address that problem once and for all. And so you know how this process worked, that we is turning awfully slow. So I felt like it's important for us to go ahead and appropriate the funds through CTC to start that process. And hopefully the time we, uh, finish up with the legislative year and adopting that appropriation bill, i- if we're successful, we can have the money in there. And by that time, the study would have been completed and then we could go ahead and start the construction process. Uh, that is the plan. I reached out to Mr. Bobby Page, who all of you all, uh, uh, know very well, uh, to get his feedback, see if there's a possibility, and he felt like it was, um, the right thing to do. And he felt very confident that we could get this approved through the CTC and would be willing to even call a special call meeting to go ahead and, uh, get that process, uh, in the pipeline. So that's kind of where we are. And it all ties into the animal shelter as well, with the flooding and so forth. And so, you know, the Band-Aid approach, we've been doing that, it just does not work. So we're looking for a long-term fix. So we believe this is the long-term fix. The other question we kind of have that we got to figure out, we don't know the answer to just yet. Once we get the water out on the seventy six, then the asphalt digits and what have it will lay handle the water. But you know, we'll look into all of that, but I just wanted to make you all aware of where we are, uh, with the animal shelter, uh, and and that regard. So, uh, that is kind of the the plan that is in the works.
Senator, do you ever remember us using our CTC money to to do, uh, analysis and planning, or is it always been for resurfacing?
It hadn't always been for resurfacing. You can use CTC money for, uh, analysis, but you know, and it just does not only alleviate the flooding problem there at the animal shelter and prison farm, but you got DMV right down the road, you got the shirt, the law enforcement uh, complex there where the magistrate's office, the detention center, ACT, it will help. So it's, you know, it's a win-win situation, uh, here for everyone. So in my opinion, Mr. Thor, to answer your question, I think it's money well spent, uh, to do that.
Uh, would this plan show how we're going to disperse the water? Like you said, there might be a question about alcohol.
Absolutely. They will do the study, they will do the design, and, uh, DOT will, uh, manage the project as well. And so they're the experts. So, you know, and it's their their road, they maintain that road, that's a US federal highway. And so, um, and this is, uh, what, uh, advice uh, have been given to me by experts. And so I have no reason not to, you know, uh, uh, trust the excellence here. Cause I'm not.
Senator?
Yes, sir.
How much money do we have left to, we appropriated what, one point five million for the animal shelter?
Yes, sir.
How much money is spent so far?
Uh, good question. I believe we have like seven hundred, um, uh, about, uh, seven hundred and fifty-three thousand and some change, uh, out of about, uh, one point, um, well, about out of about one point five million. So we've expended about eight hundred, uh, and plus a thousand dollars.
Well, I had a, uh, guy send me video rats running. And he said, Robin, all you got to do is put, uh, I believe a two by two block on top of the block. So maybe you can, you know, talk to the director and.
Well, it goes back to, um, um, my opening comments about the animal shelter, uh, Mr. Turner, we don't want to piecemeal it anymore. We want to fix this problem.
Thank you.
And so we don't want to use, um, um, our funding, the piecemeal this thing, and then we'd be right back where we started. We looking for a long-term fix, so, uh, have to be a little patient. You know what I mean? Let us come up with a good plan that will work and 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 can get buying, uh, from the citizens as well and and take care of our, uh, animals. So, um, we still have issues out there and, uh, and and we are aware of those issues. That's why we're getting someone here that can kind of help us develop a, uh, long-term plan that will work and we won't have to keep having this conversation uh, day after day.
Yeah, thanks, John.
Thanks, Senator.
Yes, sir. Um, also with public works, um, just wanted to share with you as a result of, uh, public works, uh, where we are, you know, uh, I believe it was at our last council meeting that you all, uh, made the guideline for us to kind of change our hiring policy when it comes to, uh, public works and, um, um, building, um, services. And as a result of that, um, we have been able to hire four people. Uh, one was hired on August sixth. Uh, the other three are scheduled to be hired on August twentieth. And, um, and that way, you know, cause, uh, we were down on, uh, uh, heavy equipment operators and those kinds of things. And so this really has made a difference. And one of the, uh, um, uh, future employees also is a certified motor grader, uh, trainer. So he will be able to train our motor graders as to how to properly, uh, fix our roads, because you know, you will get a lot of complaints about that, so do I. So the long-term solution is, and I don't think it can get much better when you have your own in-house trainer that can actually train our, uh, motor grader operators, uh, no fault of their own. But if you've never been trained, you don't know. Then, you know, you do the best you can. It's kind of like OJT. This way, we have a, uh, uh, professional person that knows about, uh, operating a motor grader. And not only just operating one, but knowing how to properly, uh, maintain our roads. And so I just wanted to, uh, make you aware that is where.
And Senator, the thing that I think would be wonderful, because sometimes these guys have to be out. Now you've got a spare driver. See, they won't be calling us after two days' rain. You got a guy that can get on that motor grader and keep it going.
That's right.
So that's even a better place to do it.
And and you know, Mr. Thor, that's a good point. And 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 I would remind you all, which I know all of you are aware. You know, when we get the rainfall that we're getting, uh, these dirt roads, you know, we gonna have these problems and and people have to kind of understand that. I'm I'm and and especially when you're down, uh, with employees. Now we've corrected that. Once they get on board, and so hopefully we can do a better job with a quicker turnaround and and maintaining these roads. But we have over seven hundred miles of dirt roads here in this county uh, that we have to maintain. And and, um, and so, um, you know, there's some challenges out there, which we are getting caused now because of the rain that we've been getting in these roads, um, flooding and and washing out and so forth. But I can promise you, uh, uh, Mr. Black and his team are working just as hard as they can trying to fix these roads as quickly as possible and and, um, and so that's, that's, that's what's going on.
Deputy Administrator, so we'll be full staff?
Full staff. As of August twentieth, we'll be full, full of staff. And and to go back to your question, Mr. Turner, about the available funds for the animal shelter, seven hundred fifty-eight thousand, two hundred sixteen dollars and eighty-three cents to be exact, as we have in that, uh, account. Also, um, want to talk about, um, uh, our code enforcement officer, we have posted that position uh, because, uh, we we don't have one. Uh, and so our HR has posted that, um, uh, our first priority is to try to find someone who is, uh, uh, certified or have their, uh, certification as a code enforcement officer, because what we've been experiencing in the past, we hire people, then they come in and and we try to train them, we send them to the, uh, the academy or whatever, and and they can't get certified. And so it's costing us money, time. And so now we're going to look for, um, someone who, if not certified, uh, someone that we think can get certified. So that's, that's very important. And and so that takes a little more time. So I just want to, uh, make you all aware of that. And we know businesses and people are calling, wanting inspections and 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 so forth and whatever, or you know, whatever the issue may be. And so that's kind of, uh, where we are with the code enforcement office. Uh, uh, the finance director, we have posted that, uh, position. It's been posted now for, uh, about three weeks. We've had, um, several applications to come in. Uh, have a couple that looking really, really good. Uh, HR informed me on yesterday that we've had a few more. I'd like to have at least three good qualified applicants or applications because we scheduled, uh, the interviews. So that's kind of where we are. And 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 what's, uh, really important here, as you all know, um, uh, with that is that we're, we're really looking for, uh, someone who is familiar with governmental uh, fund accounting, which is different from the UAP accounting. Uh, and so we want someone who, uh, has some experience in government, government accounting. Because in the past, we've hired people that didn't have that experience and didn't have that knowledge, that just didn't pan out. And so, you know, government accounting is way different from, uh, uh, other accounting. And so with looking for that specialty, uh, it takes a little longer to find the right person, uh, that would be a good fit, uh, for that, uh, position. Also, just want to mention, uh, briefly, uh, with business and license. So and and I'm just trying to make you all aware, so you'll know what's going on. If you get questions, then you can respond to these questions. Um, but with the business and license right now, we only have one person working in that office, and that is, uh, Jonathan Rogers, who is the planning and zoning director. Uh, one clerk is, uh, um, a medical lead who had surgery. And then we had the other clerk who, uh, submitted their resignation on last Friday. So Jonathan is having to do it all uh, right now. But we have, um, instructed HR to post that position, uh, clerk position in business and license. And so just wanted to, uh, make you all aware of that. Um, also, uh, Ms. Ernestine Gago, excuse me, in the Marion County Delegation Office, um, has decided to retire, uh, uh, towards the end of the month. So Ben Sweetman, uh, she's been with the county for seventeen years and has done an outstanding job. And so we're going to have a little, uh, uh, retirement drop-in for her on, uh, August the twenty-first from eleven thirty AM to two PM, uh, in the conference room, in the administration conference room. So just wanted to make you all, uh, aware of that. Also, the, uh, fire training facility, we're kind of on the last, uh, in the, uh, last phase of it, uh, completing it. Uh, the, uh, Bullhead, uh, system will be delivered next week, next Monday. And that will take place all during the week, uh, from Monday to Friday, they will deliver that system. They will set it up, they will test it and, um, and so forth. And they will take them about all week. It will come in here from, uh, Arizona. So with the law enforcement training facility, the indoor, uh, outdoor shooting range and the fire training facility is a total cost of three million, four hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-four cents. And today, we, uh, the revenue that has come in to support that, uh, total, uh, system out there is three million, one hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. And the balance to complete the, uh, system is two hundred and forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars forty-seven cents, around that off the two hundred fifty thousand dollars. And it has not cost the taxpayers of Marion County one dime. This was all generated by way of state dollars, um, uh, foundation dollars and, uh, utility tax credit dollars. So just wanted to make you aware of that. And for the balance of that, that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we have put in a request, Congress, uh, to, uh, fund the, uh, uh, balance of that for the infrastructures. Uh, and basically the two hundred fifty thousand will be for the overlay of the, uh, road out there. Uh, and to, uh, seed, uh, hydroseed the entire, um, um, area out there that's within the fences, about four and a half acre acres. And then behind the buildings would be sod, and that's what that two hundred fifty thousand dollars, uh, will be used for. So, uh, want to make you aware of that as well. And I believe that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, sir.
Sir.
All right. I'm a random of understanding for the Marion County Prison Form officers.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, you got before you this memorandum of understanding, um, there, and I'm hope that Brian or Jimmy will fill in here if I say something that's not right on this thing. Um, there, we have employees throughout the county that started with, with prison camp employees, how Mr. Williams rolled it out to me that we needed this memorandum of understanding together, uh, that need to have certain training and certain certifications through the Criminal Justice Academy. Um, in order for that to happen, like it's been happening for the folks in Sheriff's Department and for the, uh, detention center, um, the sheriff needs to have access to a database to allow that to happen. Is that right? And the only way for that to, uh, that access to be allowed is for the there to be a memorandum of understanding between the county and the sheriff, that he has that, uh, ability and responsibility to do that, to gain those trainings, to gain those certifications, they need through the Criminal Justice Academy. So that's really all this is, uh, to put that, uh, together in one document, so the academy can can possess that and and see he has that ability to do it. So would you just take action on that, please?
Sir, move.
Second, got a motion, got a second, and a discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Goes likewise, I have it.
That's all right.
Request and comments by members of council?
Okay, I got one. This weekend I had a lady call about she was donating money to the animal shelter. Someone out there told her that if we send it to the county, it goes to the general fund and they can't use it, which I called the senator and he'd already checked on it. He'd had that question brought him. So I I think I got her straight, but it'd be nice if you would explain exactly how donations go as far as how, like where it goes and how they can access their money.
Right. Uh, yes, sir. Uh, uh, Mr. Thor, members of the council, um, basically, uh, for the county with the animal shelter, there's a PayPal account that's set up where, um, someone who's willing and who's wanting to give, uh, a donation to the animal shelter, they would use the PayPal. And, uh, it would come to the county and treasurer would access that money. And that money would go into the general fund, that is correct, but it is coded for the animal shelter. So they could still draw that money down if any invoices, anything came in, it would go against that money and all other monies that came in for the animal shelter. But since setting up the PayPal account, they have created a five oh one C three, which is the SOS, uh, support of shelters, support our shelter. And so now people are using the nonprofit, they, uh, support our, our shelter, it's how they're giving the money. Uh, 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 but, you know, mainly it's, it's a lot easier. Plus you can get a tax deduction for that, because it's a nonprofit, you give it a nonprofit. So you can get a tax deduction, a, a benefit, giving that money to the shelter. And just like we had someone to give the other day to the PayPal, like five hundred dollars. Well, there's a commission that comes right off the top of about fifteen dollars. So actually only four hundred and eighty-five dollars would actually go to the shelter. But with the, uh, non-travel, every dime goes directly to the shelter, but you can still access it. And so, um, we just don't have people using the PayPal anymore. And so the treasurer wasn't checking it periodically like she had in the past, though. That fact nobody was using anymore since they set up the nonprofit. But once we got the call and we looked, she checked, and the money was sent to her and she, uh, put it where it belonged, in the general fund, coded or for, or earmarked for the animal shelter, which the animal shelter still has access to that money, just like they have access to the money with the, uh, nonprofit.
Certainly, one of the, well, uh, they talked to a employee of the animal shelter. And they were not aware, I mean, she told them that if it goes to the general fund, they don't get it. But I don't, they just didn't understand how you had to do it.
Right.
So it might be advantageous for us to maybe get some kind of understanding with the shelter workers. Because you want them to do it.
Right. You want to do it. We want to encourage. And and we can still use the PayPal. It still works. And, uh, and I'll have that conversation. And, uh, thank you for bringing that to my attention.
Well, Senator, to that point, there's also apparently a Venmo account and, um, which was posted on the Facebook page. Uh, it was said, uh, Marion County Animal, South Carolina Animal Shelter saying you can send donations to this Venmo account at sosmcas@gmail.com. That's not a county, um, email address. So if we can look into that.
I would like to see if you send me that.
Yes, sir.
And I would like to hear that, because I'm not aware of that, that Venmo account.
Is it any way, let's say at the end of the year, we can see where, because I mean, we don't want the money. It was donated for the animal shelter. I might have as a self audit. At the end of the year, we would get a list of all the donations and then how it was expended. That way, we can say, listen, we don't, we're not getting involved, we just want to kind of be aware of what is going on.
Right.
You remember the last group wouldn't do an audit.
Yeah.
That's why we had to get rid of it.
A little, little, little transparency.
That's right.
Little accountability. I understand. And let's see, can we address that and put something in place where we might can have access? Of course, that's a nonprofit. Um, we do understand that, a nonprofit has its own, uh, board of directors and building body. Um, we do understand that. A nonprofit has its own, uh, board of directors and government body, uh, which I don't know how much authority we have over that, but, you know, uh, and I have all confidence in the nonprofit organization. And I don't think they would have any reason not to share that information, but, you know, transparency. So we, we'll have that conversation.
So if someone bring cash, say a five hundred dollar cash donation out to the shelter, how is that?
You know, um, then it would, uh, be who the, uh, animal shelter director to log that money in and keep, you know, records on that and how that money is expended. And, and if they bring five hundred dollars cash, then that money, uh, should be transferred into the, uh, in the general fund or, uh, nonprofit. I have, but if they bring it to the animal shelter, it should, you know, go to the general fund and it should be, uh, received in. My opinion.
Is that's what being done, though, as a?
I, I, I don't know. I can't answer that now. I don't like saying, I don't know, but when you don't know, you don't know. So I'll have to check in with that.
I have two things. Um, I, I think we need to look into adopting some kind of social media policy for county employees, um, to make sure that we are controlling the narrative that goes out about Marion County from Marion County employees. That should be coming from one or two voices, the administrator or whoever is designated, um, to monitor and control our social media platforms. Um, so I don't know if that's something that you can get back to us with some kind of formal, uh, policy that we can adopt, whether there's other counties that have something like that in place.
I, I think we can do that, Mr. Rogers. I, I mean, I think we can, uh, kind of talk to, uh, um, employment labor attorney to give us some guidance on that. And I'm sure, uh, Mr. Fred Williams can do that. So I have HR to reach out, uh, to, uh, uh, Mr. Williams to see if he can, he give us some guidance on developing any, uh, social media policy.
Thank you. It was recently stated, um, at a meeting by our treasurer that there was a one million dollar surplus. And when we looked at the comments from our auditor, um, she also intimated that in twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, there was a one million dollar surplus, which would, um, stand to reason that in twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, um, based on the budget we passed, there may have been another one million dollar surplus. I think it's time that we go ahead and look into that and, and get an answer to the question of where is those or where are those funds?
And, and, and we are, we're moving in that direction, uh, uh, Mr. Rogers, um, to try to get our arms around it. To, uh, financial last night for the county.
Thank you. And I appreciate all your work that's been going on in recent months. Things have kind of been coming at you, um. But we all appreciate and understand what you do, um, the importance of your seniority in the state house and what that provides for Marion County and Ori County and Florence Counties, the areas that you serve. Um, so we have, give you all, I'd say we all give him all our full support, um, irregardless of what others in the public might think.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman, um, uh, have, um, couple executive session matters, personnel, the contractual.
Okay.
Or labor briefing.
Um, the, the finance director process.
Yes, sir.
How's the interview board is gonna look? I know you're saying you look for people with different life experience.
Yeah, we, um, believe it or not, that's a great question. Um, because, you know, you know, you need someone, when we're doing this interview, that has some experience in that area and knows the right questions and the answers to get the answers that they're looking for. And with that being said, I actually reached out to, uh, Brenda Jackson, uh, auditor, but invite her to sit in, not influence or choose the financial director, but just to kind of help us, uh, vet the person. So, you know, ultimate goal here, we want to get the right person. We want to get the, uh, uh, the right person this time. We don't want to fumble the ball anymore. And so I thought that her expertise and her knowledge, she would be a, a great person to have to sit in on the, uh, interviews. And of course she had to go back and check her guidelines. If they, uh, unfortunately, um, she cannot sit in all of the interviews. She cannot influence that in no way or here to influence. So what she has done, which is very helpful, she has helped us develop some questions asked, uh, uh, candidates to kind of get the right answers for, for whatever, what we're looking for. So, uh, the question is very helpful, but it's, it's, it's still evolving. We're not there yet. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to put together the interview team, get the right people on the interview team that can, yeah, uh, uh, vet these candidates. And, uh, so, you know, um, since you mentioned that, I was gonna also reach out to the association, association of counties. Cause that's what they do. They always have some staff person who can, who specializes in various, uh, areas of government. Uh, and that's gonna be my next one. Just like I reached out to the animal shelter, I plan to do this, you know, cause, um, uh, I don't trust myself in making this, uh, uh, doing the interview with HR alone. So I won't try and sell, uh, the right to do that.
Mr. Chair. With one of the requirements, uh, experienced in the field of governmental accounting?
Yes.
So what do you, it's not gonna be all the job trained?
No, sir. We don't need that. No. You know, we, we, we've had that. And, uh, and, and there might be a little bit of that, but as far as the really knowing the fundamentals of government accounting and having some experience in that area, that's what we gotta have. I mean, we just can't settle for anything less, in my opinion.
I appreciate you all having them post that job with the South Carolina Government Finance Officers Association. And they may even be a more resource in terms of hiring someone during this process.
All right, executive session, contractual matter, personnel, legal briefing, counter administrator.
Economic development.
Economic development.
Yeah.
Oh, move second.
Got a motion, got a second and discussion? On my favor, say aye. Moves likewise, I've had it. I need a motion. Come out of executive session, go back in the regular session.
So moved.
Got a motion, got a second and discussion? On my favor, say aye. Moves likewise. Motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we give a temporary increase in salary of twenty thousand dollars to Kent Williams for additional duties.
Second.
Deputy Administrator.
Got a motion, got a second and a discussion? On my favor, say aye. Moves likewise, I'd have it. Another motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we hire Parker Poe to help us in our search for a new administrator.
Got a motion, got a second and discussion? On my favor, say aye. Moves likewise, I'd have it.
I make a motion with adjournment.
Right, yeah. Okay, we'll do another motion. By show of hands, who is in favor of Parker Poe? Those opposed? Any more motions?
And Mr. Chairman, uh, I would like to recommend a council approval for a feasibility, feasibility proposal from, uh, Restoration Fifty-two Covenant, uh, Rainbow, South Carolina, to do a feasibility study on the bulk property, which includes seventy plus or minus acres. And this is for housing development.
So move. Got a motion, got a second and discussion? On my favor, say aye. Moves likewise, I'd have it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Mr. Attorney?
You have it, thank you.
I don't think it, am I, yeah, that was it.
What were adjourned?
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned.